We'll call the meeting to order in accordance with South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-4-80E, South Carolina Code 1987 is amended. All the media in the media area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our prayer by Ms. Gore and followed by the pledge by Mr. Jeffords.
Let us bow our heads, please. Father God, we thank you right now, God, for all you have done for the Darlington County School District. We thank you, oh Father, that you blessed us with a very good school day opening and you blessed us with a beautiful convocation. We thank you right now for our students, our principals, our teachers, our administrative, and we thank you for our new superintendent. Lord, we ask you to help us continue the vision of this school district and, God, help us to still stay united, oh God, and that is about our children and their safety and their learning. And we thank you for all of who are here on this evening and we ask you right now for a special prayer for Mr. Govan's wife, who was in the hospital, and we also thank you for, ask you for a special prayer for our other board member Valencia Sanders Thomas, who is out sick too. And we thank you for this meeting, God, and we ask you, God, that everything be done according to your will. And in your precious name I do pray, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no citizens' comments. Our next regular work session will be August, Monday, August the 25th here in the boardroom. And our next regular meeting will be September the 8th at 6:00 PM, also here in the boardroom. I'll take a motion to, oh, to approve the agenda.
Somebody.
Second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, I'll take a motion to approve our minutes for the July 14th.
I'll say.
Second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Starts with our budget reports.
What you have before you with the budget report this time is the draft pending any year-end adjustments for June. Right now, we're showing a $3.3 million surplus, which is about what I predicted. We have a few, a full expenditures that haven't been posted that we'll post in the next week or two. And then the audit adjustments, sometimes there's, I know that we'll have some adjustments for construction, retainage, and those kind of things that we don't do but once a year. But this is pretty close. We had, at the end of last year, our fund balance was 35.3 million. And with this additional 3.3, that would bring us up to 38.5. Our policy is to keep at least three months of expenditures, and right now our expenditures are averaging a little over 10 million a month. So, we've got about, almost four months worth, got 3.8 months worth. So, we're right on target. When we get to the end of the audit, we'll know exactly. Did anybody have any questions about the pledge? Okay. I think somebody else has before the rest of it. You have any questions?
Do we, the fund that we use to, our building fund, that we use to do Black Creek, what, is that fund depleted currently?
We actually, I'm working up the final capital numbers, but right now I've got about $6 million in bond funds that will be transferred there to complete it. The rest was fund balance. The majority of it was from fund, from fund balance transfers.
Right.
All but about five and a half, $6 million, but hadn't done the final accounting up yet.
Okay, so we don't know what we have, what our final balance is in that, in that fund?
Well, that fund, the fund balance part for the new school would be depleted, but we have other bond funds still from our annual bonds that, when we meet for work session, Mr. Shurano and I will have a full accounting.
That's just one, as we move forward in our discussions about Bay Road.
Yeah.
I kind of want to know where we are.
I got you.
So, that's the reason for that question.
Yeah, we haven't fully reconciled. We did it out of March, so I know, I know close what we have in there, but I don't have it in front of me about, we had scheduled to discuss that at the next work session. So, we'll have all that tied down and with a bowline.
But that doesn't mean that we weren't, we weren't $6 million over budget. We just, we knew we were going to run a little bit short with what we had transferred, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions? While you're out there, we have our quarterly reports. Does anyone have any questions, i.e. the quarterly reports, which are our sole source, our emergency purchases, and our minority vendors? Anybody have any questions from Ms. Douglas, while she's out there for that section? Thank you, Ms. Douglas, we appreciate it. And that brings us to our presentation of what we're going to do at Bay Road. Mr., Mr. Joel Cease, come on up, please. Come on down. Joel Carr.
So, as you know, we've been, Madam Shurano, if you're a member of the board, and also Dr. Ferguson, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. As you know, we've been studying different ways to add on to Bay Road Elementary School to accommodate kindergarten program. And currently, the existing school is, as you see here in white, we've got the, out in front, we've got parking. In the rear, you can see in the upper kind of left side that there is some parking there in the bus loop for teachers. However, there's not really a lot of teacher parking on site. So, as we move forward with this, that was another element of this that we needed to think about, was providing some teacher parking and also parking for visitors. So, if you would also notice, there is a storage building that we've identified that you currently have on site too. And I point that out because as far as where opportunities are to add on, when we think about adding on a kindergarten program, we want to keep those students in that same area. And so, on the, kind of the upper left, I'm just going to be upper right, you can see we're adding a PE and art room area. And then down next to the kindergarten area is where we're discussing adding on eight additional kindergarten classrooms. And these, some of these will be Montessori, some of them will just be regular kindergarten, others would be also the 4K program. So, when we add these additional students to the school, now we had to find somewhere else for our PE to go because the PE currently is also a part of the cafeteria. And that cafeteria area is needing to be dedicated to just food service. So, that is why we have added on the PE area. In addition to that, we've also created kind of an entry lobby that we'll see momentarily. But that's kind of the overall layout. We met with Dr. Ferguson earlier last week and then we decided to pull the drive, the fire service drive, we had plenty of room, we could pull it down and create a play area off of the kindergarten and also a nice play area off of the PE area there. As far as the floor plan goes, just four standard kindergarten, I'm sorry, two pods of four, it would be a total of eight kindergarten classrooms. I mentioned the storage room, our storage building that we lost. We're adding that storage building back in the middle of this, and that way we can store tricycles, other amenities that the children need for instruction and outdoor play here. We've got work rooms that will be in between the kindergarten classrooms and also each kindergarten classroom has a toilet. So, we do not affect the toilet count in the existing school and we do not need to add additional toilets there. Again, with the multipurpose room and the art room, we would also have toilets there for those students to use. You can see here we've added a lobby area, kind of enclosed lobby area, that now the students will enter into and then we'll have the multipurpose area and art room. We've got kiln room, well, also you'll notice we have a riser room for the fire sprinkler system. So, all those areas associated with the art room, you'll notice also that we've added some glass in that art room and an opportunity to go outside for those students to do artwork, do projects, multipurpose area for the PE also has direct access to their play area. And that's all the secure type play area that we'll have. We also investigated what if, we wanted to make sure that in the future, if we decided to add additional classrooms, where they may go. And you can see kind of the pink that is down on the bottom right side. And that would be more for upper grades, it could be third, fourth, fifth grade. But we looked at adding those classrooms back off of the PE area, but it got to be so far remote and removed from amenities such as the media center and really the general office area. We said it just seemed like a ways out there and it also isolated those teachers and students from the other teacher staff. So, we felt like this down in the bottom would be a better place to put the addition, should you choose to do that in the future. But we always want to think about how we add on again and what the public population would be. When we add these additional eight to 10 classrooms, we're kind of at the limit of the core facilities then for the building. Core facilities being your cafeteria, what's your kitchen can accommodate, media center, and then also your office areas. We would also accommodate in this addition, another assistant principal and AP's office would be in there. So, that's kind of what we have there as far as an overall plan and fire lanes associated with that. So, we'll be glad to entertain any questions that you may have on any of this.
The multipurpose room, would that be just for those, that new addition or?
No, that's for the entire school.
They already have one multipurpose room now, correct?
Right, so this, the multipurpose is actually a PE area. We're referring to it as multipurpose, but really it is dedicated PE, physical education. And then your stage where your cafeteria is, that all remains the same as is, and it's really dedicated for community use and then also for school use. So, this is strictly PE.
So, you were saying the PE multipurpose, PE multipurpose area right now is part of the cafeteria?
Correct.
And we would need that for food service?
For food service, you just need to expand.
So, that's why this is needed, okay.
Yeah, when we add the additional public, public population. We also, I mentioned the drives, we also would be adding dry, parking area in the, you can see in the upper left, at the bus parking, additional teacher parking there, and then also out in front that you really cannot see.
Where's Bay Road? I mean, which place the school faces, like, is Bay Road to the bottom?
Bay Road's at the bottom.
Okay, okay, all right. Because the potential parking would throw me off, like that wasn't in the existing, but that's just additional parking in the existing parking?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Now, we'll back up and you can see, that's what you have now.
Okay.
And then you can see in the next slide where we're expanding that parking.
Yeah, yeah, I missed that, okay.
So, that kind of covers us, gives us, you know, opportunities there for more parking.
Does the existing school not have an art room?
It does have an art room, but it is fairly small.
Okay, I mean, I was just curious, so is that going to stay an art room?
And it could, or it could be repurposed. And we're not, we just have not gone through those discussions yet.
Okay.
I think in talking to Ms. Lynn, with adding this many kids, we will really need to have two art rooms.
That is not uncommon.
No, I'm not, I'm just.
Seven hundred students.
I mean, I'm not dissing it, I'm just curious.
So, this is going to accommodate, how many more students?
In the, that's a good question. We typically think of, in the kindergarten classrooms, around 17 to 20, no more than 20. So, you know, by adding the eight, and again, this is all a part of, you know, the closing of, of.
Southside.
Southside, thank you. Carolina, I've been anywhere to Southside.
And just closing the 5K.
That's right, that's right. The 5K program, that's right.
So, how many, how many Bay Road student kindergarten, 5K kindergarten students are at?
We have 90 right now.
Okay.
And just from, and this is not related to this one, but going back to Southside, getting rid of some of those mobiles is going, just as you walk through that campus, you're going to, they're going to recapture a lot of ground to be able to get playground, their playground is across, they had to walk out into a field through, instead of coming right out of their back, like most kindergartens come right out of their, their rooms and there's a playground right there. They had to go out, almost around the field. So, getting rid of the mobiles there will facilitate better, better facilities at Southside. It'll give us more potential to do some stuff there.
So, how many kids?
Do we have estimated costs yet?
They're coming over from, I'm sorry. No, he didn't hear you, he didn't hear you talking.
I'm sorry, she was asking too. Yeah, you were both asking, but that's fine, go ahead.
I'll go here.
Well, let's not do a side conversation, just do more.
Okay, I was asking Dr. Ferguson, how many kids from 5K at Southside is coming over to Bay Road?
So, there are currently five classrooms of 5K at Southside. And I think there are 90 children who are in those classrooms currently. They're, we're in the first 10 days, so kids are still coming in, especially at the younger areas. So, that would allow for all of those classrooms to come in to 5K. And it would also allow us a little bit of room to either grow because of, Ms. Lynn is bursting at the seams, enrollment is up at Bay Road, so it gives us a little bit of room to grow, but it also allows us the opportunity, if we wanted, to also consider expanding the Montessori program that's also at, at Bay Road currently. So, we, we need, we have to have five, this gives us three more classrooms to flex, plus the additional PE art room to be able to access the cafeteria for that many more kids and make that a completely usable space.
More.
Yeah.
Your question, yes.
Estimated cost. Right now, we are waiting on the topographic survey. We haven't got that back yet. It is due, as a matter of fact, this week. We're estimating right now around $10 million for this. That could go up a little bit or it could be down a little bit depending on what we have to do as far as site work goes. And one other thing is, we, we really did not have a lot of parking in that initial estimate. That's something that came up more recently. So, we have not, I have not met with the contractor to discuss that yet, but we will, those conversations will go on, but in that, in that neighborhood. And then we'll, the other part of that probably is the same question would be, when can we occupy? Right now, we'd probably be looking at, we got a quick decision, looking at December of 2026. So, basically a year, three, four months from now. And that, what takes us so long with construction anymore is the permitting process for land disturbance. That's a three to four month process. And so, that really delays us. But as soon as we get word from you guys and we can get the building footprint to the engineers, we can start designing the site work now.
And we're always concerned about safety for our kids while construction is going on.
Correct.
And we went through, we did this at JL Kane, I mean, we completely tore down the school and built one behind it.
Right.
Just, but just want to reassure, can you reassure us from that?
Yes. Excellent question also. So, what we, there are two connecting links that connect these back to the school proper. The contractor, we've talked to Ed Con, they can make those links over the summer months, even though it's a shorter summer, they can make those connecting links over the summer months. So, we'll be able to build a building proper and then come back in and make those final connections during the summer. And that way, we still have egress out to the students, we are fencing, et cetera. We, and we're far enough away, it doesn't look like it, but we're right at 35 feet away from the, the building. So, it gives us plenty of room to construct, still allow safe egress out of the building and, and also keep fair separation between students and also the construction.
What is in the pod that's connected to where the new 5K would be? What's in that wing of the school?
That's kindergarten also. So, that's why we elected to put all of those kindergarten there. And it gives you an opportunity also, if you have large kindergarten, there's a first grade, it allows you to swing back around there with first grade classrooms if you, if needed. So, it gives you some flexibility.
In the current Montessori program?
That's where it is.
Is, is in that pod too?
Okay, that's the Montessori.
Is it still just that 5K?
No, it goes all the way up to fifth grade because those kids have started matriculating up.
And so, those other Montessori classrooms are with their own grade? So, like all Montessori's not together, I mean, it's kind of?
I believe all the Montessori are on that wing and that, and Montessori is multi-age, so there would be three, four, and five-year-olds in those classrooms, first, second, and third, fourth, fifth, I think, is how that works. I'm looking at Ms. Lynn to make sure my, my grades are right.
That is not going to one grade, grade, rechange?
Looks good to me.
So, right now it's 10 million to build that?
Yes, ma'am.
But depending on how economy goes, things could go up.
We, we feel pretty comfortable with the pricing right now. We feel like it's stable and that's good news. Like I said, the biggest thing that we don't know is, is how much storm drainage is going to be required. Is there a sewer line that we may have to relocate? Those types of things. But we, looking at the old plans, we feel like we got most of that taken care of, but still could be something that was picked up on the topo that we weren't aware of.
And just for the, this does include our playground equipment, correct?
Does not include playground equipment. Nor does include.
We learned that lesson.
Furniture and those types of things, yeah. It's just construction costs.
That's just construction. Guess estimate on what our playground equipment and furnishings package would be?
Mrs. Haslam, boy, I'm putting you on the spot here. Typically, what we see, that FF and E portion is usually in the 20% range, sometimes a little bit more, 25, sometimes a little bit less, around 17. But in that 20 to 22% range is a good, is a good number for that FF and E element.
Two million dollars.
Does that 10 million include the additional parking?
We have some parking, but I don't think, well, I know we don't have everything included that we are kind of thinking about. And to be honest, we do not have an exact number of parking spaces that we're looking to try to capture, but we'll, we'll have further discussions and make those decisions.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. That'll moves on to our action items. We've got our minority business enterprise utilization plans. Can I get a motion to approve?
Somebody.
Second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're up to our go bond. Dr. Ferguson, you want to lead us through that discussion?
Ms. Douglas, I think is going to take us through that one.
He said no, he does not.
As you know, as the board knows, every year we issue a general obligation bond. We use it for capital projects, renovations, like we just looked at, technology. This is no different than any other year. Last year, we did an increased amount because we were able to use some sales tax, excess revenues from sales tax funds to pay down the bond. So, this year, we're proposing a $15.5 million bond. If it's approved tonight, then they will sell the bond into this month, we'll get the money in September, and then we pay it off in March. Darlington County School District has been doing this a lot longer than I've been here, so it's how we fund everything. We use 8% money to pay, pay back the bond and.
And we do pay it off every year.
We pay it every March.
Okay.
And this is at the full capacity, and this is on.
Yeah, what percent, is this the same, like average, same percentage like we normally get?
Yeah, I didn't bring those numbers, but I know we can go up to, it's close to 28 million. So, Dr. Ferguson, I met with our campus financial representative and went through the numbers and talked to our bond counsel and this is what they, this is what we decided on, so.
And.
We do it every year.
All right, this goes to fund the capital projects that we have.
Capital projects and our.
To do this, to repair roofs, HVAC.
Our, our technology refresh is usually about $3 million of the annual bond issue.
And we're going to get to the capital conversations at the work session. You said technology right now is running around $4 million of this?
Usually I K around $3 million.
$3 million.
We don't use that much every year, but we, that's our normal allocation.
I'm going to make sure we approve the resolution for the 2025 GEO bond.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have Act 207, which is our deployment petition. Can I get a motion to approve the candidate who requested that?
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Ferguson, that brings you up to your update.
Ma'am, well, good evening, everyone. I wanted to start with, we have had an incredible start to the school year. And before I jump in and share updates, I want to share with you a video so that you can see for yourselves our students, our staff, and the energy from those first few days. This year, we are committed to being more intentional and purposeful in telling the story of excellence in Darlington County. And tonight's video is just one example of how we'll be doing that. And I want to give a special shout out to Chris McCagan, who followed me and many of the board members around for the first three days of school and captured this footage and turned it into a video. So, I, I think it's a really good video that kind of shows the excitement that we had in our schools. So, without further ado.
At the heart of this new school year is a simple truth. Every child matters and every day is a chance to help them grow. Welcome back, Darlington County, from our youngest learners walking into school for the very first time, to our seniors taking their final steps towards graduation. This year is full of promise. This is more than a new school year. It's a fresh start for every learner, every family, every school. We've visited every school and everywhere we go, we see the same thing, commitment, care, and a belief that excellence in teaching and learning belong to all of us. Because when we show up for students with purpose, with high expectations, and with love, amazing things happen. This work takes all of us, families, educators, community partners, and most of all, students themselves. Thank you for trusting us. We're ready and we're honored to do this work together. We're one team with one dream, each child, every day. Darlington County School District, excellence in teaching and learning for all.
And so, I want to thank the board members who are able to make it to our schools. We, we did visit every school and every one of the board members.
We did visit every school, and every one of the board members who has talked about this has shared how meaningful it was to be in the schools and see the smiles on those students' faces, and the pride that our staff takes in this work. And I've also, without fail, heard from teachers, from custodians, from bus drivers, from principals about how much it meant that all of you were able to come see them on their opening day. So thank you for, for being available and being in schools at the start. I've got to give a few shout-outs. Our custodial staff had the floors absolutely shining. Every school we went into, you could almost see your reflection in the, in the floors. And so I think that created a really strong first impression. To our teachers and principals, they created warm, organized, and welcoming classrooms and buildings. It was amazing to walk into the high schools that have a thousand kids, and between classes, there were no kids in the hallways. There were very few kids who didn't have a full schedule, and those who were still working on that, there were guidance counselors and folks there to take care of that. Our bus drivers, in the very first weeks of school, transport almost six thousand kids every single day, all across Darlington County. And to our food service staff, you serve thousands of meals every day, but I have to give a special shout-out that you delivered an amazing chicken bog to kick off the school year. When we were in Hartsfield on that first day, every school that we went to were like, "Try our chicken bog." And so Ms. Hasler and I, I think, had chicken bog at almost every school in Hartsfield that first day, and they were all good. So I can attest to everybody here tonight that our kids are well-fed in our lunchrooms, and it's a, it's a good meal. Also, on the slide are the pictures from our superintendent cabinet. So this year, we've expanded, and we added a retired educator's cabinet. That's something I was really excited about. That first morning, starting with them, I got to see some old, familiar faces who helped build the foundation that is Darlington County School District, but also some folks who really helped me become the educator that I am. And it was really special to talk to them. We counted up the years of experience in that room, and it's centuries of experience that were sitting around those tables, helping shape some of the conversations this year. We also heard from our support staff, personnel of the year, and also our teachers of the year, and had our faith leaders in. And I was joking with the board before we started, I've had my picture taken a lot in the last week, and I have realized that I need to smile more, because I promise y'all I am happy, but you can't tell it in all of those photos. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna work on that. The picture in the middle, I also want to point out and, and celebrate and highlight a little bit, that is around some of our teacher pipeline work. So those folks in that picture are the first cohort of the APEC scholars at Coker University. And those are individuals who may not have made it into education had it not been for that program. And so Darlington County partnered with Coker University to identify individuals who were interested in, in teaching but needed an alternative pathway. And we were able to provide them with apprenticeship work so that they could get paid as paraprofessionals while they worked to complete their certification. And there were five folks who were celebrated this past week for completing Cohort One, and those are five individuals who live in our community, who are now classroom teachers in our community. And I think that's a wise, smart investment in the teacher pipeline, and making sure that we have a qualified educator in every classroom. So that's some really good work going on right there. As we talk about our priorities, student success, wanted to highlight Darlington High School, who started off the year with fifty-eight seniors who had already met their CCR benchmarks and were celebrated at their convocation this year. Lamar High School had thirty-one seniors who had already earned CCR, and they were recognized with special privileges. DCIT had four graduates of the McLeod Health Skilled Trade Fellowship who moved directly into jobs, and two of those already have full-time roles. So celebrating early some of the success that happened in prior years, but also over the summer. And then a special shout-out also to Pete Elementary, who is having a ribbon cutting on Thursday of their new book vending machine. And so they are going to celebrate children who are recognized for character traits by giving them a free trip to the, the book vending machine so that the children can hit their button and get their free book. And that's, that machine is there, but the ribbon cutting is happening this Thursday. We have also been out in the community, providing access to our Red Apple passes, and have given out over fifty Red Apple passes as we've been out in each of the communities, connecting with folks for that. Darlington Raceway, we've also got a lot coming up with them, because the race is just a few short weeks away. And so our fifth-grade GT initiative is going to meet at Darlington Middle School and have the opportunity to meet with a driver and kind of kick off their event this year, where they're going to be building a race car and, in partnership with DCIT, over this school year. That same race car driver is going to be out at DCIT, talking to the auto body shops and some of the other programs out there the week of race weekend, too. And then Black Creek Elementary...
Don't say the name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of the driver.
Oh, yeah, okay. Black Creek Elementary is going to get the opportunity on the Friday before the race to have their students go over to the racetrack and sit in the presidential suite and meet with a special driver, who I cannot name, to, to celebrate race weekend in that partnership. On our facilities side, especially under that Safe Schools piece, we've already mentioned it with Joel in the room, but something I just want to underline is that the Bay Road Elementary expansion will allow us to move all of Hartsfield's 4K classrooms that are currently in mobiles into the building at Southside Early Childhood Center. And this is going to give our youngest learners a safe, cohesive start to their education. This project will also allow us potentially to expand into that courtyard playground area, which Ms. Hasler mentioned earlier. So to be clear, this expansion will not close Southside Early Childhood Center. It's allowing us to move those 4K classrooms into the building and expand potentially the 4K offerings within the Hartsfield community. And it just moves that 5K class, as y'all have voted on this summer, to the home school so that every school in Darlington County will now be able to serve their 5K students, which is not currently the case. Also, on dates to remember for all of you, we've got a school board law conference coming up the week after next, or actually, next weekend, on August twenty-third and twenty-fourth. And our next work session will be August twenty-fifth, and that's where we are going to be diving into the specifics around a capital projects plan. So from that, I just wanted to say thank you. These are highlights, and they aren't just highlights, though. They are proof that our mission is alive, and that we are working in every school for each child, every day. And I'm really excited because we're just getting started, and the, I can feel it, the enthusiasm is in every building that we walk into, and it's going to be an excellent year this year. So thank you all for, for all you do and your support.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Ferguson? All right. All right, Ms. Gore, you will lead us off with our board member input.
Yeah, well, I just want to thank Mr. Schuler and for starting the convocations off, because that really brought in a great enthusiasm for the teachers and the principals, that we could all come together. And your sidekick, Mr. Chuck Miller, I think y'all did an excellent job, and I really enjoyed it. That was, that was a fun time for the board, for the convocations, for all, and I really enjoyed all the schools, all the songs that they selected that let us know, you know, their vision for their own school, and I really enjoyed it. That was a real nice convocation, and thank you all for all who had an input in that. I really had a nice time. That was an awesome time for the district, to bring us all together. And I also like to thank Dr. Ferguson for inviting us to go out with him to visit the schools. And all the schools, they were different, but they were ready. I just enjoyed the readiness. I enjoyed the enthusiasm of the principals. I just had a wonderful time seeing the children in the classrooms and how excited they was, and I just, you know, I enjoyed every school that we, that we went to. Every school was, was clean. The, I mean, the custodians had, I mean, like Dr. Ferguson said, the floors were shining like glass, and, and their kitchen staff, the custodians, and everybody. We had a chance to see what everybody does to make their school great. And I just had a, I had a wonderful time, and I just want to thank all the principals, your staff, and everyone for making us feel so welcome at your schools. I truly enjoyed it, and thank you all for that. And I like that, I want to shout-out to nobody but Dr. Leonard, I really liked your school in Mar. I liked them silver foxes, I liked those, those silver, them gray floors. That was real different. I really, I said, because every other school had, you know, but those gray floors, they were shining. That's the first time I ever been in a school that had gray, gray floors. They really, and they were beautiful, and your school was immaculate, and thank you for having us. I enjoyed that, too. And the main thing that I enjoyed is the new vision for this district. I feel a change, and I feel that we're going to have a good school year. And I really do like that new theme: one team, because we are all one team. One dream, each child, every day. I, that is a wonderful thing, that just captures, captures everything. There's nothing else left to be said, that we're looking out for every child, every day. One dream, one team. I have nothing else left to say. That said it all.
Ms. Thompson?
Oh, okay. I just want to say welcome back to everybody. I mean, back to a beginning. It's an exciting beginning. Every new school year is exciting because it's new, full of possibilities. And I'm here to support every single one of you. That's why I'm here, that's why I show up. And so, yeah, I just am excited to see us begin anew. So, welcome back.
Same here. It's been exciting. I was excited, we went around all the schools, and everybody was excited, everybody was ready to go. All our principals were excited, and the kids were ready, I think, ready to learn. So it's been, I think, been a very good week opening school, really. Now I got a, Mr. Schuler?
Sir?
The press box at Lamar High, have y'all looked at that yet?
Yes.
You have?
So it has been, the roof has been fixed. I went, after you talked, I went and laid eyes on it myself. We do need to replace the, the above, the ceiling.
Ceiling tile.
Yeah. So that may be what it was.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Miller?
Sir?
We had eighteen last time. Do we have, still have eighteen vacancies, or?
No, sir, we have five, five today.
Five? Woo! Great.
Congratulations, five. That's wonderful.
Yeah, super. Really.
Principals and our team doing some, some really good recruiting and getting creative. It really helps because we don't need as many substitutes when you have that huge, where we're able to start the school in single digits like we predicted, kind of like Renee. Our prediction came true, and we're at five today.
That's probably the least number ever, right?
Sure, certainly in my time here, yes, sir.
Yeah, because I can remember. Congratulations, great job, you and your team.
Congratulations, great job.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, I don't know what, you know, more I can add. It was just, it was a great opening. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson, for inviting the board members to come along. That was, it was a wonderful experience. And I mean, I know that some of our board members aren't able to attend because they have full-time jobs, that they aren't able to, but I hope sometime we can do this again in the future. I know you're...
They're talking about us.
But anyway, thank you to all the schools who were so graciously, you know, welcomed us in, as, you know, we were welcomed in. It was just, it was a lot of, you know, we'd like to say the mutual admiration club, but we have a lot of admiration for our, our teachers and our staff who do this in and out every day. So looking forward to a great year. Thank you. All right. Personnel actions. I'll take a motion to approve personnel actions.
I think that we approved the personnel actions.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Have an executive session scheduled?
Yep, I think we move into executive session to discuss personnel issues and contractual matters.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move into executive session.
I'll take a motion to come out of executive session.
Say no.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're out of the executive session. No actions were taken, no votes were taken. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Say no.
Second?